Good morning, everyone. It's nine oh three AM, March twenty first, two thousand and twenty five. This is a continued hearing for two forty B projects, one at forty one North Main. Uh, excuse me, deliberation hearing, uh, forty one North Main and thirty, I'm gonna mess up the number thirty. Four, thirty four. Uh, I don't see the address on the, uh, anyways, the Brush Hill forty B project by Phoenix, Phoenix Partners Brush Hill LLC. So, uh, it looks like we have a quorum. I see all the members here, so we're gonna open the meeting here. Um, I sent around two drafts, uh, for both of these projects. Um, has all of the members of the ZBA had a chance to look at those drafts? I see nodding yes from Rick and nodding yes from Jonathan.
Yes, I have, Mr. Chair.
Great. So, um, I would propose a vote to approve the, um, Brush Hill, uh, project, uh, consistent with the, uh, letter that, um, the applicant responded agreeing to the proposed conditions, um, from Attorney Hill, uh, and consistent with the, uh, draft of the agreement that I circulated, um, to this board with particular waivers and conditions that are consistent with previous projects that we have approved. Is that a sufficient motion for a vote, Mr. Novak?
I would say yes, and I would second it.
Great. Uh, do I have a vote, Mr. Labby?
Labby, aye.
Mr. Fitch?
Fitch, aye.
Mr. Novak, this is your last approval. How do you vote?
Aye.
McBride, aye. Um, that's wonderful. Uh, the Brush Hill project, uh, is approved with the conditions, um, and some of, most of the waivers that were requested. Um, I will draft the opinion and get it, uh, to Town Council and file, uh, within fourteen days. Um, any other house cleaning items from my esteemed, uh, wise colleagues that are, that are leaving us for probably warmer temperatures? Nothing? Okay.
Well, I, 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 I assume embedded implicit in your vote is, is that you are authorized and directed to, uh, file a decision consistent with what we just voted. So, yes.
Thank you. Um, okay, I'm forty one. Um, this, uh, project, I think we all agree, had some fatal flaws. I sent around a draft, um, the crux of the proposed denial here is the, um, location of the soil absorption system as proposed, being on too close proximity to the buffer of a public water supply, uh, semi-public water supply in an existing soil absorption system, uh, as well as the fact that as proposed would exceed Title V nitrogen loading, uh, on the site, given the capacity. Um, I think that's the basis of the denial, in addition to the fact that we never really, uh, solved the domestic water supply problem or the traffic, um, issues as well. So those are secondary, which, um, for the primary reasons for denial. Um, any thoughts on those reasons in the draft or, or, um, the basis of the denial, of proposed denial, Mr. Mr. Novak?
Um, I, I, I agree with ninety-nine percent of what you said, Zach, as, as, as usual. Um, I think the water supply is not a secondary issue. I think it's just as, just as bad, just as fa- fatal and just as primary as, as, as the septic system being on top of the restaurants well. Um, you know, they're both, uh, they're both absolute fatal for us. Um, and I liked your draft. I sent, uh, to the group, uh, some mi- very minor tweaks, uh, that I merely suggest to you. Simply don't have, you don't have to adopt any of them. Um, and, uh, so I, I'm very supportive of your position, sir.
Do I have a vote, uh, for the denial of the forty one North Main forty B project?
I'll second your motion too, while I'm at it.
Uh, thanks, Rick. So I, I'm gonna move to deny the forty one North, North Main, uh, forty B proposed project, um, due to fatal flaws in the, uh, wastewater, um, wastewater treatment, proposed solution, as well as, uh, domestic water supply and traffic safety concerns. Uh, I'm asking the board for the authority to finalize an opinion that I've already circulated in draft based on those, uh, criteria.
Well, I second your, uh, motion.
Great. Uh, Mr. Labby, how do you vote?
Labby, aye.
Mr., uh, the, the, just to confirm, this is an aye for denial, correct?
Correct, an aye for denial, Mr. Joe.
Uh, aye for denial.
Mr. Novak?
Aye for denial.
Wonderful. I, uh, myself for denial of forty one North Main project. Uh, I will, um, take the authority you've given me and finalize the opinion, uh, get it to council and file it in fourteen days. Um, Mr. Novak, uh, thank you very much for your contributions, uh, to the town and, uh, to, uh, this board, uh, and particularly, uh, for the, uh, the mentorship and guidance you provided to me to help navigate some of this. Um, hopefully, uh, you know, hopefully I'm a decent successor, um, and hopefully not for not as long as you. So, uh, we need to find some other members. So. Yeah.
Indeed.
I.
Thank, 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 thank very much. It's, it's, it's been a long thirty-five years of public service. Somebody else's turn.
Yes. Uh, with that, I think we can, um, adjourn this meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded. Um, Mr. Fitch, how do you vote?
I vote aye, and I also add my thanks to the, the great public service that Rick has done for us.
Mr. Labby?
Aye, and Rick, thank you so much for everything you've done for the town, and again, for your, for your mentorship and guidance, uh, over the short period of time. It's been greatly appreciated, and we'll, uh, we'll take it from here.
Somebody needs to pick up the sarcasm.
I think I can handle that.
Uh, we're gonna delegate that to, to Todd, uh, for now.
You mean you have three top draft picks right in front of you for, for sarcasm?
Um, and, uh, Mr. Novak, how do you vote?
I vote, uh, aye, aye to adjourn.
Wonderful. Aye as well. Uh, meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Um, Rick, good luck with the house sale, and, uh, hopefully we'll see you before you leave.
There we go. On we go. Thanks, everybody. Have a great day.
Have a good weekend.
You as well. Bye-bye.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, this is a meeting of the Sherborne Zoning Board of Appeals. It is May seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. Um, we have some good news. We have a new associate member, uh, who has, uh, agreed to join us. Let's not scare him away tonight. His name is John Hammond, and, uh, we are very happy that he is joining us. Um, Todd, uh, is a little tardy, but he may join, but that is, he's not necessary, uh, to, uh, have a quorum in this meeting. Uh, so just, we'll do a roll call for the sake of it. Um, Mr. Fitch?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Hammond?
Here.
Uh, great. And Mr. McBride is here. We have a quorum. Uh, so the first, uh, matter on the agenda, I believe, is Toll Brothers. Is that right, Jean?
Yes, Will's, Will's here. He's just gonna give us an, uh, update, and, um, I think, uh, request for an extension.
Okay, do we have a mat? Do we have a particular matter number on that, or no?
No.
Okay. Hi, Will. Uh, thanks for joining. Uh, please, uh, you know, let us know what that.
Sure, sure. Will, Will Adams from Toll Brothers. This is, uh, regarding the Coolidge Crossing project, which is combined with Meadowbrook, but I'm here singularly on the Coolidge Crossing apartment, uh, project. As you know, this has been, this was approved three plus years ago, I believe, and we are still working through the MIPA process. We've been working hard with, uh, neighboring communities of Natick and Framingham to access water and sewer to the project. So we have a long process ahead of us, probably eighteen to twenty-four months. Um, but the, uh, comp permit was extended last, uh, May. Um, we, not only was it extended, we, uh, bought the comp permit from Baystone, so it was, I, I don't know what the right word is, assumed or, you know, sent over to us, for lack of a better word. And tonight, we're just here looking to extend it for, for one year as it expires in the next few weeks.
Okay. And, uh, do you know off the top of your head, could you just provide like a, a fifteen-second overview of, of the project? How many units it was in Russell?
Yep, it's, so it's, it's a hundred and twenty unit project, three separate buildings with one amenity clubhouse building right off at eighty-four to eighty-six Coolidge Street in Sherborne.
And this would be serviced by the, the Sherborne Water Sewer District that was recently enacted, correct?
Thank you. Uh, yeah, apologize about that. Yeah, newly created water and, created in, uh, uh, October, November of, of two thousand and twenty-three. I've been involved in this project for almost three years now, so the timelines really get extended. Uh, but correct, we have the Water and Sewer District created. The governor signed it last December, December twenty twenty-four, and we are now going through the MIPA approval process for the server to be able to join into the MWRA's system.
Great. Thank you for that context, just in case, uh, anyone is not aware of, for what, what we were talking about. And this was approved by the ZBA a number of years ago.
Well, I believe twenty twenty-one, but, um, you correct me if I'm wrong.
I, I, I wasn't here.
Neither was I.
Um, so, um, but I think, uh, does, does the board have any questions about the extension, uh, that Mr. Adams is requesting?
I don't. It's a nice project.
Thank you.
Uh, John, any questions or comments?
Nope, no questions.
Great. Um, do I have a motion? Is that proper, Jonathan? Uh, Mr. Fitch? Uh, I think we could, we could do a motion here, and I think we have the authority to grant an extension. Is there any perspective on the length of that extension?
Jeanie, what, uh, uh, constraints do we have in terms of the limit of the extension?
I think it has to go year to year. That's what we've done. So just to be on the safe side, I wouldn't do it any more than that.
Sounds good.
So I would move that we extend, uh, for one year.
I will second that. Uh, so we will vote by roll. Uh, Mr. Fitch?
Aye.
Mr. Hammond?
Aye.
Mr. McBride, aye. Uh, up, Jean has a.
Real, real quick question. Um, the extension is, was dated one year for, uh, June twenty-first. So do you wanna do it from June twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-six, correct?
That's right.
Okay.
June twenty-first, twenty twenty-seven. Um, great. So the motion passes. The extension is granted. Um, we'll see you again, or someone else. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank, I appreciate it, uh, everyone. Thank you very much. Have a nice night.
Thank you.
Um, the next matter on the agenda is a, a petition of Frank Wannas for a special permit under section three point two point two to maintain an accessory housekeeping unit at one Knoll Crest Farm Lane in Sherborne, which is in a residence B district. Uh, is Mr. Wannas our representative here this evening?
Hi, we're here.
Hello.
Hello.
Um, do you have, uh, anything to present to the board, uh, this evening, uh, with respect to your, uh, petition?
No, we sent a copy of the plans. It's for, we're building a single, basically a single-family residence, and then we wanna add on, um, above the garage, um, uh, one-bedroom apartment.
Um, Jean, do you have the plans by any chance, or, um, do you, uh, have the plans available to share this evening?
We can pull them up if you can give us just a minute.
If you don't mind, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, sure.
Are you able to share, or is it blocked? Oh, you're unmuted.
Sorry, we just, we just had to pull it up. We just found it. Let me try to share now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
I have them if you need them.
If you have.
Sorry, we have a bunch of tabs open. We're just trying to pull up on this.
That's fine. Jean, if you could pull it up and it's available, if you don't mind doing that, that would be great. Thank you.
Can you see it now?
I can see something. I don't know who, uh, I see Frank's screen. Yep.
Okay.
So if you could just pull up the sort of basic layout, um, that would be helpful.
So this is the first floor plan here. This is the garage right here. This is the main house, and then if you go up to the second floor, um, this is, um, this is the apartment area right here, above, directly above the garage.
Great. Um, and how many square feet, um, is that apartment?
It's eleven hundred.
Okay, and, um, is this, has, have you, um, reviewed these plans with, uh, Mr. Kenny, our building inspector?
Yes, he has copies of the plan, and he was the one that advised us we needed to submit to you all for the approval for the accessory dwelling.
Okay, and I, I have, I apologize. I have not, um, prepared and done the calculations and looked at these plans. So you're saying it's eleven hundred. I, could you blow it up a little bit, if you don't mind? Uh, I just wanna see those outer.
Yeah, sure.
On that, uh, box on the left.
Yeah, we made, we tried to make sure we were within the, the rules.
Yeah.
So technically, it's the, the, um, from the wall to the outside is twenty-nine feet, and then from the outside wall to the outside wall is forty-one feet, but there's, uh, the wall is, uh, eleven inches on each side thick, so the livable space is, um, less than that.
Yeah, I think, um, that's a good, that's a great point. Um, from personal experience, the town assessors, uh, measure the outside of the house. Um, and so I don't know what sort of measurement would apply in this instance. I know there's ANSI standards. There's also the town assessor standards. So in order to stay on the right side of the line for both, I would, um, you know, I think, I just did a quick calculation. It looks like you're well within the twelve hundred. It's, you know, sort of within our jurisdiction, but I just wanted to point that out. Jean?
Um, Chris Candy measured it, and it's on the inside part, not including the stairwells, and it's under the twelve hundred, um, threshold.
As long as you have something from Chris saying he's okay with the square footage, then I.
Yeah.
Um, any, any comments or questions from the rest of the board, Jonathan Fitch or Jonathan Hammond?
Well, is it the case that, uh, the applicant is gonna continue to, uh, live in the primary dwelling unit that's being constructed?
Yes, this is for our primary residence, and we are not renting out this unit or anything. It's actually, it's for one of my family members.
Okay, great.
Great. Um, any other questions? Or comments from the board or the public? Nope. Um, well, I, uh, would move to approve this, uh, petition for a special permit. Do I have a second?
I second that motion.
Wonderful. Uh, vote by roll. Uh, Mr. Fitch?
Aye.
Mr. Hammond?
Aye.
Uh, McBride, aye. Uh, your petition passes. I believe that's a, uh, what is the, uh?
Four. It's a four-year term.
Great. So we're gonna amend that vote and make a new, uh, motion. So I move to, uh, approve the petition for a special permit for, um, permissible accessory dwelling unit for a term of four years, and that would be four years, I say, I would guess, from when? Jean, is that from the letter, or is that, that's from a letter from today?
It's from, it's actually from, uh, the date, the letter. It's, it, it's from the meeting. Excuse me. It's from the meeting.
Great. So it'll be four years from today, so it'll be, uh, May, uh, seventh, two thousand and twenty-nine, right?
And renewable thereafter.
And renewable thereafter. Thank you, Jonathan. Uh, do I have a second for that very, um, uneloquent motion?
I second that eloquent motion.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Fitch, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Hammond?
Aye.
McBride, aye. Um, your, uh, special permit, uh, will be, uh, provided to you, I guess. Uh, we'll provide confirmation in the mail in a few days when I can, when Jean gets it to me and begs me to send it after a few weeks. So, uh, we will do our best to get that going, and if you need something sooner, just let Chris know, and he'll pressure me, so.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Great, thank you. Uh, next on the list is a petition, uh, from George Fisk for renewal of a special permit under sections three point two point seventeen, three point two point twenty, and five point two point seven to maintain an office building and retail space with signage at twenty North Main Street, which is in a business P district. Hi, George, how are you?
I'm doing fine, Zach. Thank you.
Uh, anything new on this renewal, or is this the status quo?
I, I think it's really rather perfunctory, but I'm happy to answer questions people might have. So nothing's really changed dramatically. So, and I did send a list of the current tenants, uh, gave that to Jeanie. Perhaps that's been shared with you.
Right. Uh, any questions from board of the public?
I don't have any questions.
Great. Uh, I would motion, uh, fi- I would move to, uh, renew the permit for a term of four years, or is that, no, one year?
Five.
Been five.
For a term of five years, uh, to May seventh, twenty thirty. Um, do I have a second?
I second that.
Wonderful. Vote by roll, Mr. Fitch?
Aye.
Mr. Hammond?
Aye.
Mr. McBride, aye. Uh, congratulations, Mr. Fisk. I know we're giving you something that you were very, you know, very concerned about getting, and so we will send you a letter, uh, in the mail in a few weeks.
Thanks, thanks very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, great. Next on the list is a petition, uh, of Gary Lebarsky for renewal of a special permit under section three point two point nineteen for a retail operation, uh, of a doggy daycare at Six Potter House Lane, which is in a residence, uh, which is a business G district. Hi, Mr. Lebarsky, how are you?
Yes, I'm good, Mr. Chairman. How are you doing?
Good. Uh, this is a renewal, correct?
Correct.
Uh, has there been any material changes, uh, of the operation since we, uh, issued the last permit?
No.
Wonderful. Uh, are there any, uh, questions or comments from the board or the public?
I don't have any.
Great. Um, and what's the duration of this, uh, special permit also? Is it?
Five. Five years. Yep.
Great. Um, so I would move to renew the special permit, uh, for a term of five years, uh, through May seventh, twenty thirty, um, subject to compliance with all other regulations, uh, of the town of Sherborne. Uh, do I have a second?
I second that.
Uh, I'm gonna amend my motion. Laws of the Commonwealth, federal law, and the laws, and, you know, Sherborne regulations, so. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I second that.
Mr. Hammond, uh, sorry, John, how do you vote?
John, you're muted.
Uh, I thought you were talking about, uh, Mr. Fitch. Uh, aye.
All right, Mr. Fitch, how do you vote?
Aye.
I'm Mr. McBride, aye. Congratulations, Mr. Lebarsky. I will, uh, letter in a few weeks.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Next on the, uh, laundry list is a petition of Mr. Alex Leatherall for renewal of a special permit under section three point two point eighteen, three point two point nineteen, three point two point twenty-two, five point two point three, and five point two point seven of the Sherborne, uh, zoning by laws to operate a gas station, restaurant, and retail business with signage and to maintain an oversized sign at twenty-one South Main Street, which is in the business G district. Uh, hi, Alex, how are you this evening?
Top of my game, Zach. Thank you very much.
Um, you gotta stop expanding, 'cause I'm gonna run out of breath at the next renewal, so. Um, do you have anything, uh, is there anything new since we gave you the last permits?
No, I just, I, I said my, my goodbyes to, to Rick Novak the other day. I guess he's, he's leaving us, which is, and I, I said, you know, my experience in fifteen years is that the ZBA is far and away the most professionally-run organization in the town of Sherborne, so I'm grateful for everything you do.
I appreciate that, Alex. Thank you very much. Um, so besides, uh, appreciating, I guess, what we try to do, uh, which is to disappoint as few people as possible, um, do you have any, uh, any, any, uh, comment on your business operations that have changed, um, since we last issued any of those permits?
Well, I've added the Jackson's Kitchen commercial kitchen, and and that's about it. So I don't, I don't think that in and of itself has any bearing on these permits, which all, already allowed for the activities that are being undertaken in that part of the business. But you may have different thoughts, Zach. I'm not sure.
I just wanted to just confirm. So, um, and does Jackson's Kitchen have a sign ex- on the outside of your?
What we did, and this goes back, you know, Jonathan was nodding, 'cause God, I forget now. It's probably a year that I came and I asked that we be able to create that panel that now says Meals to Go on the street sign, but that's the only signage that, that needed influence by the ZBA.
Okay. And that's what you're renewing here tonight?
That's right. That's what I'm renewing, yeah.
And does anyone have a, anyone have any questions? Does anyone feel like we need a picture of that to, uh, make a motion?
Well, excuse me, I, uh, there is, uh, some, some sort of signage on the side of the building about Jackson's Kitchen where the Dunkin' Donuts window used to be?
There is, there is, but unless I'm mistaken, Jonathan, the, the, the ZBA rules allow a, what's called a building sign, and I think those qualify as a building sign. I hope I'm not wrong about that.
Okay, well, I don't have any objection to that signage.
I'm just going to, uh, everyone, just give me one moment here. Uh, Mr. Hammond, any questions from you? I hear nothing. Um, Jonathan, you wanna make a motion?
Yes, I move that we approve the renewal of this special permit.
For a period of how long?
Five years.
Alex is asking for five.
I think it's, oh, it's, Jonathan, it's always been five years. I mean, I'd love, I'd love it to be fifty-five years, but.
Sure, okay. Okay, we'll see you, see you in five years.
Uh, I second that motion. Any objections? No. Uh, how do you vote, Mr. Fitch?
Aye.
Mr. Hammond, how do you vote?
Aye.
Great. Uh, Mr. McBride, aye. Uh, congratulations, Alex. We will see you in five years on May seventh, uh, twenty thirty.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Um, I've lost my, my agenda list, 'cause I was looking something up. Um, next on the list is the petition of Mr. Rosa for a special permit under section three point two point two to maintain an accessory housekeeping unit at thirty-nine Wildwood, uh, in a residence B district. Is Mr. Rosa here this evening?
Yes, I am.
How are you, Mr. Rosa? Um, do you, uh, have any updates for the board on the use of this accessory dwelling, and are you living at the residence?
I, I am, I, I'm not living there yet. We're still building the house, but I. I, I am, I, I'm not leaving there yet. We're still building the house, but that's, I am gonna be living in it. And most likely. I, I just want to show my face. Sorry about that.
Okay.
It's gonna be for my, my.
Okay.
My mother, my mother-in-law is gonna be leaving there.
Great. Uh, and you said, and I, I can't believe it's been two years since I think we granted you this permit. That makes.
Actually, actually, you grant, you grant a permit for the garage itself.
Okay, for the garage. Okay, otherwise, that's, that's gonna make me feel bad.
Yeah, that, that.
Wait, so it's, it was for the garage, but I recall you just, I recall discussing the ADU at that time. Is that right?
No, I don't think there was any discussion on that.
Okay. It was a special apartment for the garage.
Yeah, that is correct.
And you're gonna put a, you're gonna finish above it?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, and how many square feet? Do you have any plans to share with us?
Let me, uh, Jean, do you mind sharing the plans? Because I think I'm gonna have a hard time. It's eleven hundred and seventeen square uh, square feet.
For some reason, I can't get them to open, but wait a minute. I got it. I got it.
Okay.
Uh, have you talked to uh Mr. Candy about the?
Yes, I think we're leaving the deja vu from the first, from the second, uh, I had one on the agenda, exactly the same thing.
Okay.
Yes, I, I share, I shared the plan with him. He, he re, he revised the whole thing and he. Actually, he taught, he, Jean's, Jean knows everything about it as well.
Okay. Um. And uh, I actually spoke to Chris today, and I don't think he had any updates for me about anything tonight, so I assume everything is uh good that's on the agenda from his perspective. So. Um, if we can't share the plans, um, I guess.
I've got them.
Okay, because I've never done that, never shared my screen.
You might have to. One I have. Did, did you send them to Chris?
I actually, actually, I, I did send them to Chris, and I also sent them to your personal email because you're not getting from my, from the, from the town.
All right, hold on.
For some reason, the town was blocking my email.
Yeah, it's really.
Uh, I think, I think.
I got him, I got him, I got him.
Oh, you got him?
I got him. All right.
Yep.
Uh, do we have conventions or any sort of notes we can refer to besides just the uh?
If you go. If you go to the fourth page, Jean, actually, fifth page on that plan. No. Go, yep, right there.
There is.
Okay, nice.
Hold on. No, that's not it. Hold on a sec. Let me see. Fourth, fourth page. Yep, that's it.
Okay.
Yep, sorry about that.
I can.
There's, the gross area is right there.
Wonderful. That is very clear and easy to read. Um, any questions from the board or members of the public?
I don't have any.
Great. Um. And this is a two-year special permit, Jean, or five?
It's four.
Four. So um, I would move to grant Mr. Rosa's petition for a special permit for a permissible accessory dwelling unit. Uh, until May seventh, twenty twenty-nine. Do I have a second?
I second that motion.
Wonderful. Mr. Fitch, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Hammond, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. McBride, aye. Uh, Mr. Rosa, your petition uh passes for a special permit, and uh we will get that out to you by letter in a few weeks.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good memory.
Hi.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And I think that concludes the agenda items for the evening.
That does. Did, did everybody see um the Pell, the Math Housing approval that I sent out today?
Yes. I did. Thank you, Jean. Uh, we haven't, that doesn't commence yet, right? We, we.
No, we have to wait for Bob to formally file.
Okay. Uh, sounds good. Uh, do we have another meeting on the agenda uh, uh, on, or no?
Nothing.
Nothing, huh? That's good. Uh, things are quiet these days, so.
Okay. Then, um, I will get these. Pardon me?
I said, we'll just wait, we'll wait to respond to something.
All right, I'll do the draft letters and get them out to you next week. Um, so it'll be good, we'll be good.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, John. Thanks, John. Uh, your question to uh adjourn, I moved to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Yes, I second that motion.
Uh, Mr. Fitch, uh, how do you vote to adjourn?
I vote aye.
Mr. Hammond.
Aye.
Wonderful. Mr. McBride, aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, Jean, as always. Appreciate the help.
And John Hammond, they're not always this quick.
Okay, that's right. All right. Sorry, I wasn't on, uh. I wasn't on video. I was at a baseball game. I thought it was gonna end in time, but it did not.
No worries. These, this is, this was the easy, these are the easy ones.
Okay.
And actually, you probably want to be off camera for the forty B thing, so.
All right, go enjoy your baseball game. Bye.
Thank you.
Well, go Celtics.
Oh, yeah, that starts too. Yeah.
All right.
Good night.